Let us stand as you're able, gentlemen. Remove your covers, please. Let us pray. Our Father and our God in heaven, we thank you for the many blessings that you bestow upon us, though we are unworthy. We ask your forgiveness for our sins and transgressions. We ask your guidance tonight as we consider matters before us. Father, protect those who serve us in uniform, both here and abroad. Father, answer the needs of prayer for those who deserve it. Give them mercy. All of these things we ask in thy name. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Roll call, Katie.
All commissioners are present.
Are there any amendments to the agenda?
The full agenda or just the consent agenda? Are you considering the consent agenda part of the agenda?
Yes.
I have questions about number one on the consent agenda.
You want to... let's see, what is...
It's the professional service agreement.
Oh, for the public... for the...
Yes, sir.
When we get to that, we can break that apart.
Sounds good.
And we'll do that one separate.
Mr. Chairman, I think we want to take the first presentation off the agenda for tonight.
Okay. All right, any other amendments? Can we get a motion on this?
Motion to adopt the amended agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor? Motion carries. All right. This brings us to the approval of the minutes from the May 20 regular meeting and executive session. If there's no changes, can I get a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Got a first and second to accept the minutes. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Minutes are approved. Nancy, you're up.
Could you hear me? Yes, now you could hear me. Yes, good evening, commissioners. So tonight's presentation is a presentation of the fiscal year '26 proposed budget. You all have a copy and also a copy of the PowerPoint. And this is similar to the presentation at both of the work sessions, but this is kind of where we are with the proposed budget. And I will just get started. So... maybe I will get started. Let's see. Good... Look at that. Okay. So according to OCGA 3681-3, we need to present a balanced budget for the fiscal year '26. And to balance a budget, your revenues have to equal your expenses. You could do that in many ways. Just straight revenues equal expenses. Revenues plus fund balance use to equal expenses is a balanced budget. Revenue plus transfers in equals expenses. And then revenues plus fund balance plus transfers in could equal expenses. And all of that represents a balanced budget. So our budget process from the beginning is in February, we start the budget kickoff meeting with all the departments and the constitutional offices. Through March, they work through their budget requests. They submit them to the finance department in April. And the budget committee meets with each department head and constitutional officer. In May, we had two work sessions. And today is June 3, and we're presenting our proposed budget to y'all. And this budget will also be posted to the county website by the end of this week. I'm hoping by the end of tomorrow, but definitely by the end of this week. And also, it will be... a summary of it will be published in the Tribune Georgian on Thursday. And then after tonight, we will have a public hearing on June 12, and adoption is scheduled for June 24. And both of those two meetings, I believe, are at 6 o'clock. So this is where we are with the general fund proposed budget. We have projected revenues of $47,887,390, and we're proposing fund balance use of $1,009,011. So that would give us a total of $48,97,750, and that equals our expenditures. And this is a 1.15% increase over the current fiscal year, which is fiscal year '25, and it's an increase of almost $550,000. And just to note that the expenses cut from the requested budgets were at almost $2.3 million from what was requested to what is being presented tonight. So just an overview of revenues. Our big item, which the top line represents almost 60% of revenues received, is the current year ad valorem tax. And that's budgeting about just over a 9% increase in tax collections. And also, another large one is the local option sales tax. That's about the fifth one down, and that's 13.5% of all the revenues. And we're increasing that by just almost 3%. So overall, with all the increases and decreases, it increases by 1.15%. And this chart represents the fund balance, and you just always need to remember that fund balance is a point in time. So this was... if the second one over from the right is fiscal year '24, so that's the fund balance that was June 30, 2024, or July 1, 2024, which was the beginning of the current fiscal year that we're in right now. So it was 17.5 million, and we're projecting that during this current fiscal year that will use 2 million in fund balance. That's what we have budgeted at this point. One was for capital equipment, and the other, because we took the rollback rate, we needed to budget less revenue. So we are projecting fund balance use this year. And one of the reasons on top of those that we will likely use fund balance is there's quite a few grants that the expenditures have already been made. And just due to different things, mostly political climate of federal government, there's FEMA and GMA grants that are being delayed. And one, of course, the Resiliency Operations Center, we've spent almost $1.2 million, and that's a congressional direct spending grant, and that's been delayed as well. So we've expended that money, but we haven't received the grant revenue reimbursement yet. So all of these, depending on when we get the revenue in, is whether or not I could accrue that back to fiscal year '25.
Nancy?
Yes.
Just one quick question. Does that still keep us above the 25%?
Yes. Yes, sir. It puts us about 32%.
Okay.
Okay. And this chart just represents the net digest. Of course, most of the revenue for the general fund, 60% comes from tax revenue. And according to the Tax Assessor's preliminary digest, it's about 10% growth. Now, my number here, the $2,498,000 on the far right, that includes a little estimate of timber tax, mobile home values, and also vehicle values, which the tax assessor does not value on his digest, but we do collect taxes from that. So I've included that. But that's about a 10% growth, and I'm projecting a 9% tax growth for this upcoming fiscal year. And this is just a chart I've shown you before. It's just taking all the expenditures, and we've divided into the different categories. Constitutional offices, they're increasing 1.58%. County departments are decreasing 3.33%. The Joint Development Authority, their request is an increase of 33% or $250,000. The state offices that receive funding from us, it's an increase of 2.84%. And employee health insurance and workers' comp, we separated that out because that does affect like constitutional offices, county departments, JDA. It affects all of those, and that is a larger increase of 12.37%. So the total, again, is 1.15%. And this is just the highlighted changes to the budget. The salaries and benefits are increasing by $1,141,000, and that's across all the funds that have employees. And this is caused by a pay scale adjustment. We're moving... we have a pay scale, and we're shifting the scale one step for 2.5%. And then also, as employees reach their anniversary date, they have a performance evaluation where they could get up to 2.5% at that time. So we prorated that for the year for salaries and benefits. We're reallocating EMS and fire. Right now, there is an 88%, 12% split, and we're going to be moving that to 90%, 10% split. And also, we're reallocating three of their employees who we were splitting between the general fund and the unincorporated, and we believe that they're best suited to be 100% on the unincorporated funds. So that was able to save some general fund money. And then also, new positions are one part-time and four full-time positions. This is just a reminder on the insurance premiums, property liability, and auto. Just the effect over the past 10 years that it has... it's increased 200%. Most of that is from liability and law enforcement liability, although the other policies have increased as well. So these are just numbers that we can't control at this point, and they do affect the budget. Other items are the public defender, their salary and benefit increase of $58,000. The DA had requested a increase in its budget from $773,000 to almost $1.9 million, and no increases included as presented. The JDA, as I previously mentioned, we increased theirs by $250,000 in the proposed budget, but they had requested a $1.47 million increase. Special appropriations, I did need... move $617,000 to fund capital improvements, and that gets transferred over to the Capital Improvement Fund. And then E-911 supplemental funding of almost $600,000. I already mentioned the EMS split is changing, so that really moves, shifts a little, a couple percentages from the general fund over to the unincorporated fund. Fleet, we've got two additional staffing positions. And then the countywide library, the one in Kingsland has an 8.87% increase, or $36,000. And the Woodbine Library is requesting a $10,000 increase, or a 33% increase on their funding. This just shows on the left, the positions that are included in the proposed budget, two positions for the Sheriff's Office, one position for fire, which is on the unincorporated fire district, and a position upgrade for EMA. It's taking a part-time position and making it a full-time position. And then, actually, it's upgrading the position. And then on fleet, it is for a one full-time and one part-time position. And on the far right are the ones that were requested but are not included in the proposed budget. This is just a summary by type within the general fund. So, for general government, which includes all those departments listed, just at the bottom line, the, all of those are a decrease of 1.07% or $191,000 over the current fiscal year. This is judicial, or the courts. Their increase is 1.08% or an increase of $40,000. Public safety is an increase of 1.37% or $278,000. Public works is an increase of 0.64% or $14,000. And health and welfare is an increase of 3.84% or $36,000. Recreation is increasing by 9%, and that's both of the libraries. Planning and development is increasing by 17.16%, and that's mostly caused by the increase in the JDA. All the other ones are much less than that. So, overall, again, the increase is 1.15% to the budget, or $547,000. Capital expenditures, the requests from all the departments and constitutional offices with $7.8 million, and what's included in the proposed budget are capital expenditures of $4.7 million. And that's detailed, if you're in your book, it's, the last couple pages shows you that. But you've seen that before at the work sessions. Curbside collections, the increase is 6.3%, which is increase in revenue and expenditures. 911 is an increase of 0.01% for revenues and expenditures. But again, this gets main, a large chunk has to be transferred in from the general fund. If you see that, the $596,000, that other financing source, that is from the general fund. Because there's not enough revenue received from 911 fees, which gets charged on your cellphone bill, your landline, and voice-over IP. That money gets remitted to the carrier. They remit that to the state, and then the state sends it to the county. But it's not enough to run the department, so we always have to supplement that funding. And this is just a chart showing that you could see that the orangey-yellow is expenses, which of course, they always grow over the years. And the revenues have remained pretty constant. So, that bright orange is a transfer in from the general fund. So, you could see that it's kind of, been kind of constant, but we've had to make a bigger contribution this year, and there is no more fund balance to use. We're using that all up in fiscal year 25. So, moving on to the unincorporated service district, there's three departments on here. One is fire services, and that is increasing by 8%. I've got to look at my chart because I can't see that far. So, fire is increasing by 8%, but that's mostly caused by that shift again from a 90, 10% split to 88, 12% split. So, it's going from 10% divided to 12%. Another department is public works, mostly right-of-way mowing, and then also capital equipment for public works. And that increase is 10.32%. And then the last department is recreation, and the majority of that is for funding for the PSA. And that's an estimate. I've just have $641,000. That was just my estimate. They have not presented anything to me at this point, but I did factor in an increase for that. But that, their budget does not start until October 1st, so it'll be a couple months before they come to us with their budget request. I just wanted to make sure that we had it covered. And then, under recreation, we're budgeting $45,000 for some site improvements at the parks. Solid Waste Authority, if you look to the far right, it's a big decrease of 40% in revenues and expenses, but that's mostly caused by, in the current fiscal year, we had to budget 3 million for proceeds from a loan. And that's how it's really treated through the accounting portion. But it really is a loan that we received and that we have to pay back to Jifa. But overall, if you just look at the individual lines, like the commissions and fees, there is a decrease, but it's a 12% decrease in fees. And then expenses, again, there's a 12% increase in, 12% decrease in expenses as well. And for the gun range, the revenues are decreasing by about 23%. And again, that's caused mostly by, in the current fiscal year, the general fund transferred in $120,000 for some capital site improvements. And that's not occurring in the current fiscal year, so that really affects the comparison. And then this is a list of all the funds, which are in your book that I've provided. I've gone through the ones mostly that have employees. And most of these other ones are, they're called special revenue funds, and it's very specific where the revenue comes from and very specific where we can spend the money. But it is detailed in your book, and if you have any questions on that, you could please let me know. So, that comes down to a total budget for this year of $86,154,748, which is a decrease of about 3% to, from the current fiscal year. So, again, the summary budget will be advertised this Thursday in the Tribune Georgian. The budget document will be available on the website by the end of this week, and that's the web address. And I think it'll probably also be on the main page of the website. And I always have a hard copy here in case somebody is not able or doesn't have a computer that they could access the budget. They could always come to this building, and we could let them look through a copy of the budget. So, this is where we are on June 3rd. I'm presenting the proposed budget, and that's what we need to do, advertise, have a public hearing, and have adoption. So, that's all I have, if you have any questions.
Anybody got any questions for Nancy? Thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome.
All right. This brings us to our first public comment section tonight. It's limited to three minutes and agenda items only at this time. Anybody registered, Katie?
Not for this time.
Anybody from the public wish to speak before the board on an agenda item? Come on up if you want to.
Well, I don't know exactly what Katie's referring on.
I was going to call you during the public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Seeing none, we'll move on. At this time, we need to adjourn the regular meeting and convene a public hearing.
I move to adjourn the regular meeting and convene the public hearing.
First and second, all in favor? All right, we're in a public hearing. During the public hearing, those who are applying for zoning change or something like that, they're given 10 minutes to present their side or comment before the board. Those opposed will be given 10 minutes to comment, then the applicant will have a chance for rebuttal. Okay, Joy, take it off.
Thank you, Chairman, and good evening, Commissioners. First item up this evening will be a request to rezone 1.01 acres from agricultural forestry to single-family residential. Along with this, we have future land use change from commercial to residential. This request is in District 5 at 13500 Georgia Highway 40. This is an aerial view of the property, which is highlighted in blue, located on Highway 40 just before Simpson Road. This is an aerial view of the surrounding zonings of the property, which you can see is, most of it is agricultural forestry and agricultural residential. Now, the applicant is requesting a rezoning to allow them to subdivide one acre from an existing 4.48 acre tract to remodel an existing single-family home, which is located on the property. This was a submitted plat, which is a proposed plat to subdivide the property. The one-acre track is highlighted in yellow, and you can see there's a proposed, well, actually, a single-family home located on this parcel. Again, this is a request to rezone 1.01 acres from agricultural forestry to single-family residential, and Planning Commission recommends to approve.
All right. Anybody wish to speak in favor of this item? Anybody wish to speak in opposition? All right, we'll move on to the next item, Joy.
Next item up would be a request to rezone the remaining portion of that parcel, which is 3.47, from agricultural forestry to industrial restricted. Again, this parcel is located in District 5 at 13500 Georgia Highway 40. Again, this is the parcel which is highlighted in blue, the aerial view of the parcel. This is the surrounding zoning. If you would notice, I'd like to highlight that the contiguous parcel is currently zoned industrial restricted, which does have mini warehouse storages located on that property as well. Now, the applicant is requesting this rezon to allow them to develop a mini warehouse storage unit on this 3.47 acre parcel. This is the submitted proposal plat, which does show the concept plan of that mini warehouse storage, and also proposes a six-foot, six-foot fence along the property lines, accompanied by a 25-foot natural buffer on the property. So, Planning Commission does recommend approval of this item as well.
All right. Does anybody wish to speak in favor of this item? Anybody wish to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll move on.
Next item up would be a request to rezone approximately 1,500 acres from single-family residential to agricultural forestry. This property is located in District 5 at 5865 Clark's Bluff Road. This is an aerial view of the property, which does front Highway 40, and then Clark's Bluff Road is at the bottom, which does run into this property. This is an aerial view of the single-family residential zoning. And you can see the contiguous property on both sides of this is located in the city. Now, the applicant is requesting this rezon to allow family members to subdivide portions of the property into five-acre tracts. So, Planning Commission does recommend approval of this item as well.
Anybody wish to speak in favor of this item? Anybody wish to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll move on.
Next item up would be a special use request to allow a manufactured home in R2 zoning. This property is located in District 2 at 424 Crooked River Drive. The parcel which is highlighted here in the aerial view, highlighted in blue in the aerial view, is located on Crooked River Drive, on the corner of Crooked River Drive and Pelican As you can see, the majority of, all of the property here in this area is zoned R2. Now, I did do a little study of that area, and out of 92 parcels around this particular parcel, 48% of them are mobile homes, 27% are single-family homes, and 25% are vacant Now, because this parcel has a future land use designation of residential, a special use approval is required before a permit can be issued. So, staff has inspected the area, which has determined there is a mixture of single-family homes as well as manufactured homes. So, therefore, Planning Commission does recommend approval of this request.
Okay. Does anybody wish to speak in favor of this item?
Yes. Ms. Rebecca Langloy. You can go to the podium.
All right. You're given 10 minutes total for each side, not individuals.
So, I am not Rebecca Langloy. That's Rebecca Langloy. I am Shay Hallahan. I'm her daughter. So, I wrote something, because I'm a little emotionally charged about this issue, so I figured this would be the best way to get it across. Good evening. My name is Shay Hallahan. I live at 88 Cardinal Street in Woodbine on Harriet's Bluff. This year, my mom turned 73. After many years of loyal service to the city of Fernandina, she's embracing retirement and with it, the next chapter of her life, Bluff life, only a mile from our home. Let me introduce you to my mom, Rebecca Langloy. Mom, raise your hand. To friends and family, she's Becky, and to her grandchildren, she is Granny Ducky. She's a kind and humble woman who raised four children and now enjoys the title of grandmother and even great-grandmother. For 57 years, she's been a devoted member of the workforce and a steady positive force in every community that she's touched. Everyone who knows her, neighbors, coworkers, even casual acquaintances, respects and adores her. She's fiercely independent, a woman of strong values, and she proudly identifies as a conservative Christian. She's a straight shooter with a kind heart. What you see is what you get, and what you get is someone you'd be lucky to live next door to. Joining with her this evening are her two grandchildren and their spouses. People are sitting there with my mom. We all own property here in Camden County. Y'all can raise your hand, guys, so we can see their support. Okay. We're here tonight on her behalf as her family united in our dream of having her live nearby in a home that allows her to enjoy her independence for as long as possible. Now, I know some folks across the street have expressed concerns in regard to their home values being affected. To help ease those worries, I have created a booklet that the Commissioners now hold in their hands, and I am happy to share it with anybody who would like to view it after or during the meeting. Here are the facts. She purchased property in an R2 zone neighborhood where over 50% of the homes are manufactured. Correction, 48 based on your numbers. One of those is directly across the street from her lot in equal distance to the complainant's lots. It was placed there in 1973. The neighboring property values have continued to rise over the past 51 years, despite the manufactured home's proximity to theirs. So, the idea that her new home would somehow lower surrounding values is asinine. Her future home is tastefully designed and is fully compliant with every guideline set by planning and zoning. We are more than willing to meet any requirements needed. So, today, we're not just asking for your vote, but we're asking you to see Rebecca, not just as a zoning label or a structure, but the woman behind it, a woman who has earned the love and respect of every community that she's been a part of and who now wants to join yours. Rebecca is your future neighbor. She's the kind of person who keeps her yard in good standing, waves from her porch, and smiles as she passes by. She's the kind of neighbor who makes the neighborhood better by just being in it. To those who may still have doubts or who stand in opposition, all we ask is this: When you see her in the neighborhood, smile and wave, give her a chance, and be kind, because she is absolutely the same person that will do that for you. Thank you so much for your time and consideration. The booklets are self-explanatory, so I will leave them with you, Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak in favor? All right. Anybody wish to speak in opposition?
Yes, Chairman, I have several registered. The first is Dr. Gail Duggar.
My name is Gail Duggar, and I live at 441 Crooked River Drive, Woodbine, Georgia. Otherwise, my neighborhood is known as Harriet's Bluff. We bought this property in 1992. I also pay property taxes on two more pieces of property that I have in Harriet's Bluff. One, I just sold eight months ago, that was my late husband and I, which is a couple of blocks around from where I live now. I also have river rental property at Ocean View. So, I pay taxes on three different properties in Harriet's Bluff. I am 69 years old, and I've never dealt with city, county, state, or federal government in entities concerning my personal business. What an experience of chaos, confusion, and discombobulation I've experienced since I received your letter in the mail. Your procedures in this particular situation needs to be reviewed and looked at because it has upset and overhauled some of the ways that we look at things. I changed my original two-page bulleted fax concerning property value and taxes because I have someone else in my neighborhood who's going to address that fact, so we won't go over that twice. We, speaking of the Planning Committee, that I attended last week, voted four to one to approve this motor home, trailer, module home, whatever you want to call it, it still is put down like a trailer. It is not a full-time. When he mentioned 48%, those were there before we even bought the property on Crooked River Drive in 1992 and remodeled and have improved that property since 1997, as with all the other properties that we own. I changed because for right now, I'm just going to give you some comments from the Planning Committee and from the county commissioners that I've met with. No names are attached to these, but you all know who you are. We, the Planning Committee, are going to approve the request and knew we were before this meeting because we've been out to visit your subdivision. We are not a subdivision. We live on Crooked River Drive. We are separate. I think Pelican Circle was mentioned six times in this area. Yes, there are a lot of, as she put, and I can't remember your name, ma'am, Shay, I'm sorry, that she was moving her mother, that this shouldn't be a problem on a post on Camden First because the neighborhood is dilapidated anyway. I take offense to that. If you want to contest it, get a lawyer and pay him, because that's the only way that you're going to get this committee to not approve this, because we've already made up our mind. After visiting the area, you have trailers on Pelican Circle in a subdivision. Every home from the curve of Crooked River Drive to pass me has been remodeled as a home. Not one new trailer has been put on in my neighborhood on Crooked River Drive. The only issue or complaint that you have is that it will affect your property value and taxes. That's not good enough. Isn't that what we're all here about? The only reason you received a letter from us was to let you know that you have a voice. However, after further discussion with this person, it became apparent that this was the only reason to have a voice, but not to change anyone's mind that was already made up. I place blame for the interruption of my life squarely on the county commissioners in this issue, for sending the letter without explanation, without calling us, without informing us of anything. She, the lady who bought, Shay's mother, who bought the property, bought the property and put a septic tank on it well before the Planning Committee, so you know there is something going on here, that she knew it was going to be approved, and she stated that on Camden First. Up until eight months ago, I think I mentioned this before, I own three properties in Harriet's Bluff, and I pay taxes on them, believe me, especially on my deep-water property across the road from where the trailer modular home, mobile home, is going to be put. Now I only have two. I sold my late husband's property. I want it on record, I do not agree with placing a mobile home, new mobile home, on Crooked River Drive among deep-water homes and in the midst of homes in this area that are no way a trailer, module, or mobile home. The property that Shay brought up belongs to Ben Goff, and I mentioned this, and you can find it in the minutes of the Planning Committee. Ben pays no taxes on his property. The PC and CC cannot answer questions, how R2 became R2. No one I've talked to can answer any question clearly as to why this is happening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Ms. Kristy Bordelon.
That's a tough act to follow. So, well, my name is Kristy Bordelon, and I want to start out with saying, and I said this in the Planning Committee, and I just want to look at you guys when I say this. I understand this is a very sensitive, sensitive subject.
You need to address the board, not the public.
Well, this is a sensitive subject. People have strong feelings on both sides. Like, I kind of go back to the saying, "Cut the baby." No one wants to cut the baby, you know? Someone's going to come out a loser on some end. So I just want to make sure that I'm speaking on this as objectively as possible without feelings involved. And I will say, you know, at the end of the day, if this is approved, I will welcome her as a neighbor, no hard feelings at all. So I just want that to be said. But like I said in the Planning Committee meeting, you know, I've been in real estate in some way, shape, or form for 21 years. So, and I also own multiple properties here in Camden County. I own one on Crooked River Drive, and I own three in Kingsland. And like I told a commissioner when I spoke to him, I said, you know, my main concern is property value. If you guys were to put Realtors on a wheel here tonight and just spin it and call one of them and say, "Will this impact the surrounding neighbor's property value?", I can confidently say the answer is yes. You know, our average assessed value on that street is around 360,000. Our average square footage is just shy of 2,100 in the neighboring areas. And, you know, once again, I'll be on that street for quite some time, but majority of that street is retirees. And like the Planning Commission said, you know, being on deep water, we are a little bit shielded because we have a view. We have deep water. There's an appeal there. But the neighbors that are not on deep water, the ones right across the street, I can guarantee you will be impacted by a manufactured home. And, you know, like Gail said, you know, there has not been a new one on that street since, you know, Mr. Goff's home was put there, and I cannot remember the exact date. But at the end of the day, as one of the highest taxpayers on Crooked River Drive, my concern is property tax and how would an assessor assess it? So, that's it.
All right, you got a chance for a rebuttal if you want it.
Good evening. My name is James Hallahan. I am, my wife, that's my mother-in-law, and I just want to address some of the concerns that some of these people had out here. First of all, we didn't have any privy information. Actually, I'll give you a little history. I'm retired military, did 20 years, been here since 2006. I'm definitely implanted into this community, have seven kids. I'll give you, that's the backstory. Looking at this, and I understand there's concerns about property values, that seems to be the main concern. And if you look at page three of the booklet that we gave you, these are all manufactured homes, and they surround these lakefront properties, these deep-water properties. Every single one has a yellow circle, is a manufactured home. It's not going to affect their value, because they've been here, they're actually here before, sorry, I'm speaking too close here. They're here before these houses were. Ben Goff has been there since 1972. He's a manufactured home. He's in this lot right here, right across the street from them. So it's not going to affect your home value. And the other thing is, we had no privy information that anything was going to get approved. This is the first time I've ever bought property, or my family's bought property in this area, so we weren't sure about how to go about it. The people that we're working for, for this manufactured home, they work out of Florida, and basically, they said, "This is what you have to do." So we started to go forward with the septic tank and all these things. They came in, it's state-approved, certified septic area, so that's already done. Didn't realize we had to do this portion of it, which again, has been very nerve-wracking for us. You know what I'm saying? It's been an ordeal to find that the whole neighborhood that your mother-in-law is going to move into is against them. That's how it feels. Having said that, we've complied with every rule and every regulation that the city ordinance, the state ordinance, we've done all these things in good faith. And other than that, I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we need to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting.
I move to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting.
All in favor? Oh, we got a second? Now all in favor? All right, this brings us to the consent agenda. We'll just do the lease agreements. All right, the first item of the consent agenda, we moved out of it, so let's just vote on the lease agreements right now as part of the consent agenda. Can I get a motion on that?
I move to move forward with the consent agenda minus item one.
I'll second that. All in favor? All right, now we'll jump back up to the agreement with the attorney Stroberg on the juvenile court. Can I get a motion to on that item? We'll do a motion second, then we'll go into discussion.
What's the nature of the motion? To discuss?
To approve. You either got to approve or disapprove.
Okay, I move to approve the professional service agreement with the attorney Stroberg. Pending discussion.
Second.
All right, we got a first and a second to approve the contract with Emory Stroberg for the juvenile court solicitor. Any discussion?
It was mainly just a question, and Sean, I did get your text. I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to get back with you, but really, just for clarification, I see that we're backdating the agreement to October 1st, 2024. I wasn't here at that time. Has Mr. Emory been providing the services since then?
He has, so he's been doing exceptionally well with juvenile court and Judge Green, and we've had no issues. And the reason why that disagreement was started with was because the district attorney's office notified us that they would no longer be providing juvenile court solicitor services. So we had, actually us and all the other counties within the circuit had to go out and find attorneys to be able to provide for those services. And currently, he's providing those services. The rate's not changing, still the same rate at $125 an hour. Doing a very good job working with our juvenile court, and he's willing to stay on, and that's what we're hoping to achieve here this evening.
Did we entertain an agreement with any other providers, or?
There's not many that's willing to step up and prosecute juveniles, so he was the one that was actually recommended from Judge Green. He has some dealings with him. Jackie is also aware. So we did have a couple of others, I think, that we were looking at, but Emory was the one that kind of stuck out to us the most.
And then Ms. Jackie, is $125 an hour, is that comparable to what other attorneys are being paid?
It's actually a lot.
It's a lot less.
Okay, even better.
My private practice rate is significantly higher than that, but it's a comparable go-up rate.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions.
The last lawyer I hired, which was probably 12 years ago, was $300 an hour for one, $500 for another.
Hope I never need it.
But the money for this is coming out of the DA's budget as well. All right, we got a first and a second to approve. Any more discussion? All in favor? All right, this brings us to, we need a motion to adjourn, no, we're already in it. All right, Joy, you're up.
Thank you, Chairman. The first item up would be a request to rezone 1.01 acres from agricultural forestry to single-family residential, along with this where future land use change from commercial to residential. This property is located in District 5 at 13500 Georgia Highway 40. Planning Commission recommends to approve.
Okay, I move that we approve this item. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we got a first and a second to approve the rezoning. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. All right, next item, Joy.
Next will be a request to rezone 3.47 acres from agricultural forestry to industrial restricted. This property is located in District 5 at 13500 Georgia Highway 40 as well. Planning Commission recommends to approve.
I move to approve this item as well. Do we have a second? Robbie, that was you, second?
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. All right, next item, Joy.
Next will be a request to rezone approximately 1,500 acres from single-family residential to agricultural forestry. This property is located in District 5 at 5865 Clark's Bluff Road. Planning Commission recommends to approve.
Okay, I move to approve this item as well.
Second.
Got a first and a second to approve the rezoning. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. All right, item eight.
Next item would be a request for special use approval to allow a manufactured home in R2 zoning. This property is located in District 2 at 424 Crooked River Drive. Planning Commission recommends to approve.
All right, can I get a motion on this item?
I move that we approve this agenda item.
Second.
Got a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
All right, item number nine, Nancy, you're doing this.
Okay, so this agenda item is to request your approval to set up a local government investment pool bank account for SPOS 9. SPOS 9 proceeds, which begins on July 1st, must be kept in a separate account from other funds and cannot be co-mingled. Good accounting practices suggest that a separate account should be kept for each SPOS levy, and that's how we've done it in the past. The account with LGIP is held in trust by the state of Georgia on the county's behalf under a separate authority. A new account at LGIP and at Sanovis will be established for SPOS 9 use, and the monthly SPOS 9 distribution from the state will automatically be deposited into this LGIP SPOS 9 account. And an electronic resolution is required by the bank to add this account for transfers. And this is a new process. It used to be just a written resolution that would be signed by the chairman. Now I need board approval to do this, and then we will, or the state will contact Chairman Casey directly, and it'll be a resolution, a video resolution. So I need the board approval to set up that bank account, please.
Can I get a motion on this item?
I move to approve the setup of the Lamig account for the, oh, don't, hold on, back that up, the LGIP account.
LGIP, yes.
First SPOS 9.
Lots of initials. Right, right.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
Did you say Sanovis?
Did you say Sanovis? Is that?
We have an account with Sanovis, which I don't need board approval to do. So what we do is, the state will deposit into this LGIP account automatically. And then, as we expend SPOS 9 funds, I do a transfer, or our finance director, Janice Beckham, does a transfer from the LGIP to the new SPOS 9 Sanovis account. And then the expenditures, either by check or by EFT, get expended from the Sanovis account.
Just a question.
Yes.
I thought I read in there where Pineland was the bank we were going to use.
No, that's my next agenda item.
Okay.
Okay.
Is Sanovis, is it, I mean, they have a local office here, right?
They do, and Sanovis is the bank that the finance, that the county uses for the Board of Commissioners' disbursement. So we have many accounts set up through Sanovis. But this is an investment account where we really pull, we put the money, it's a higher interest rate, and then we just transfer as it's needed to Sanovis for distributions.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, and this LGIP account, we get more interest. So it works out.
It's interest, there's no fees, there's, yeah.
All right, we got a first and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. All right, next item.
Thank you. Okay, the next agenda item is for your approval, is to set up a new bank account at Pineland Bank and transfer the impact fee money from the existing Sanovis account to Pineland. And we current, Camden County currently has its impact fee with Sanovis, and it's a legal requirement for impact fees to be maintained in an interest-bearing account. And the current account with Sanovis is structured as, they call it a composite account. So they look at all the balances, and there's fees associated with it, they offset interest. So at the end of the month, sometimes there's not interest credited to the account because the fees outweighed the interest that we're earning. So we're unable to, with the existing account, show that it's interest-bearing. Although the LGIP, I could set up an account with the impact fees, it can provide an account with 4% interest, but this account would not be accessible by staff to make deposits, the impact fee deposits from the planning department. But Pineland could provide what's called a premier money market account with a 3.5% interest rate and no fees, and they have two local banks. And the other bank in the area that would have been considered as Ameris, but it's much further away from the planning office than Pineland Bank is. So we're recommending that it get set up through Pineland Bank.
I'll make a motion, we approve this item.
Second.
And also, Nancy, this allows the interest to be accounted for in those buckets.
Yes. And like, right now, the impact fee account has about $750,000 in it. So without expending any of that, that would be about $26,000 in interest each year at Pineland.
All right, we got a first and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Who's doing the next item, Sean?
I'll do it, Chairman. So this next item is to consider approval for an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Kingsland for a water utility easement and service provision. So City of Kingsland, in its due diligence, just kind of going through some of its record keeping, notified the county that we did not have an official IGA for their water and sewer services that they provide in the unincorporated sections of the county. So to memorialize that, what we've done is drafted this intergovernmental agreement that you have in front of you. And basically, what this does is just identify those locations. The predominant areas are along Harriet's Bluff Road, Clark's Bluff Road, parts of Vacuna, and some other smaller areas within the unincorporated sections of the county. Basically, what this does is just identify that the City of Kingsland has those utility services within our easements, and that they will be responsible for the maintenance and operation of those utilities within our easements. And if they do provide any types of maintenance service or any other types of operations, that they will restore the easement back to its previous condition. They are also responsible for all the hydrant testing, monitoring with national requirements. And it's basically just identifying them as the sole operator of those areas within that, the unincorporated area. So with that, any questions that you all have, I'll try to address.
Well, we'll get a motion and a second. I get a motion on this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a first and a second to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the City of Kingsland. Any discussion? All in favor? Well, you got something, Cody?
I just had a question. I just had a question. If there was no agreement, we were just, they were just kind of doing it?
Long, way before me.
Okay.
Way, I have no idea why there was no agreement. There could have been, and it was just never recorded. Sometimes that happens back in the '60s, '70s. I don't know when they actually put in the water lines out there on Harriet's Bluff. I think it was maybe in the early, mid-'90s, or maybe even in 2000, '93? Okay, yeah, so it's been a while. I'm just not sure. We tried searching our records as well. We didn't have anything either.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. All right, calendar, Katie.
There's no changes to the calendar at this time.
County administrator comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just to remind everyone that we do have an election going on right now. I think the last numbers that I saw, I haven't seen today's numbers, but I think we're just over 130 voters. Shannon, 153 now? Okay, so we got 153 voters with a full week and a Saturday of voting, so not a large turnout. But the election that's going on right now is for the Public Service Commission. There's two seats that are currently up for reelection. That's Districts 2 and Districts 3. Right now, you can vote at the Camden County Annex along Gross Road. That's weekdays from 8:30 to 5:00 p.m. There are, there is one more remaining Saturday that's going to be there, that's June 7th. This is coming up Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And for the residents in the North End, you can vote here at the Woodbine Elections Office beginning tomorrow, Wednesday, June 4th, and also Thursday, June 5th, from 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. That's all the comments I have.
Thank you. All right, this brings us to our last public comment sections of the night. We'll limit it to three minutes. Anybody registered, Katie?
Yes, sir. First, I have a comment that was submitted on behalf of the NAACP Camden Branch, invites the Camden County Commissioners, Camden County employees, and everyone in Camden County to our Juneteenth Jubilee. It will be at Cornelia Jackson Memorial Park from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Saturday, June 14th. The program includes readings of Field Order Number 3 and the names of our Civil War veterans, as well as live local entertainment. There will be a book giveaway focusing on books for children, and a traditional meal served at noon. Issue 2 of our Camden, Georgia Black History Book Series will be on sale, and we encourage everyone to attend that event.
Thank you, Katie. Anybody wish to speak before the board? All right, here are none. Can I get a motion for adjournment?
I move to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
A first, second to adjourn, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank y'all.[1737.53]